Yeah, we've been locked down.
Okay, we're live.
Three people. They've been closed the whole time. I said they've been closed the whole time, my class there.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
So, I don't know. I gotta find out, you know, they were saying everything you could do. Um.
This is, I mean, they're not really.
I'm saying what they wanted to. Oh.
I think, I think. It goes until May, right?
Yeah. It's a tip thing, but every time, every time I think about it, I'm like, oh, it's gonna be over.
How much do we think we need?
See that much.
Now, just for the signage, just to see, uh, the promotion.
So, where I propose this.
And I'll put these donations from the, uh, the.
Grants and donations. Okay. Because the city may have, obviously, this happened.
But that was, um, I. It's the, from the Marcus and Tyler. Well, they got big plans, I got plans. Let me get your block. Why? They didn't want. Oh, you can see I'm doing it.
I just realized that.
I had forgotten. I was, I was about to stop that. So, I'm. I thought I did that.
It was so big an audio there. There's, I think. I agree. Right. Thank you. And so, yeah. Give me the logo. I got it.
That's my bird. I'm following profit down. Uh, come on, turn it, please. And miss, everything you say is recorded in audio. I'm just trying to get it. That's all. I didn't have one.
Oh, what was the thing?
All right. Are we ready to get started?
Yes.
Okay. My apologies for the delay. All right. I now call this meeting to order and announce that the quorum is present. Councilwoman Anne, D-May leading us in the pledge of allegiance.
I stand clear. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I appreciate it. And for your two new members, you go next. Okay, uh, moving on to presentations, leadership manager.
And I get before we get started, we're all going to introduce our first starting thread.
Sure. My name is Brett Silverman, co-owner of Green Eyes Properties and the Schoolhouse Foundation. We're five, men or men and women, Schoolhouse Foundation. I don't know, keep adding to this.
And my name is Asia Hayes, I'm an AmeriCorps member, we're through Central Texas.
You Paul Chadwick, Texas Department of Public Safety.
Christopher Kekelvin, University of Texas, Austin.
Uh, my name is Jeline Devangels, and I'm with the Western Mirror 5013C nonprofit organization that deals with, uh, the, uh, suicide prevention and, um, making up awareness with, uh, the black community, including LBGQ, TIA communities, and people living with HIV and AIDS.
What was the name of the organization there?
What's in the mirror.
Okay.
Good evening, Prince John Chavis, owner of PJ Chavis Engineering, uh, company. Also a senior project manager at the Texas Facilities Commission. And also, um, a readiness and emergency management of flight commander, Air Force Reserves.
Right.
Captain.
Iope Fowler, owner of Libation Station, and calling myself a serial entrepreneur, but I have about three other companies as well.
And she got a good mouth, wow.
Good evening, mayor, city council staff. Thank you for letting us be here tonight. I'm Michelle Blais, CSN Austin Subconductor. I am a newly resident of Maynard, I've only been here for six months, so I'm very excited to be here. I have to turn it over to the person who's gonna kick us off today, Miss Asia.
All right, I don't, can you hear me okay, or should I?
You can't really hear me.
I'll take it down.
You can take it off, yeah.
All right. Um, good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Asia Hayes, and I'm an AmeriCorps member with Bright Through Central Texas. And I think I can speak on behalf of the team, we're very excited to be here and share a little bit more about our proposal. Um, and so, to get started, um, I did want to just go over what we're going to be talking about. So, we'll have, um, introducing a little bit more about who we are and what we're doing. We'll talk about our mission and also our campaign, um, which Chris will be speaking on. Uh, after that, we're gonna talk about our project implementation and evaluation, so you guys have a better feel of what things will look like and how we will actually put this project into action. We'll also talk about our expected results. And a large part of this project is focused on what can we do with the community and not to the community. We really had a focus on making sure that what we did and what we're aiming to do reflects the voices of our community and also how we see ourselves reflected in the community and vice versa. And so, together, we had, uh, a couple of group activities where we put out what our group values were. And the ones that were common, uh, common thread throughout all of us was integrity, service, and community. And so, with that, we had a pretty, um, focused idea of what we wanted to do. We knew that our project aims were to approach the city in a way in which we know that the city can respond and we create that platform where we're supposed to be heard. And that was our main goal in this project. It's not necessarily to say, hey, this is this thing that we're doing for you. Um, and we wanted to say, this is something that we're doing with you. And we really want the community to see themselves reflected in us. And so, that's the broad overview of what was driving us to choose a project like this. Um, and I'll, uh, go ahead and pass it along to Felix to talk about our mission statement.
Good evening, everyone. Our mission is, as at the inaugural class of Leadership of Maynard, we are a community to engage the Maynard community. The Maynard Together campaign to influence the development of our community service and spaces that we will most benefit the people of Maynard. The campaign will manage process of local government, provide access to the community, assist for improved development, narrate community needs, organize community social services for change, and reconcile Maynard's past and present. But the data obtained from the campaign will inform future community initiatives and service as the foundation that success leadership, Maynard class can build upon. Maynard Together objectives. One of the things that the team came up with was to make acronyms of the, you know, Maynard Mayor. Like we said, manage the progress of the local government. Helping the city, whoever we need to, be able to get the word out of what's going on and how we can help. Access community, assist, improve, and develop. Narrate the community's needs, whatever needs in the community that we get from our project. Be able to share with the city and whoever else we need to share with. Organize community social services for change and reconcile Maynard's past and present. When we talked about the reconcile Maynard past and present, a lot of times we hear old Maynard and new Maynard. Last time I checked, it says the city of Maynard, not old or new. So, that's one thing we wanna work on. I am from old Maynard, but I am loving the new Maynard. We had a great class yesterday learning about the history of Maynard and where the Maynard is going. One of the things we heard yesterday is, I believe it's in eighteen seventy-two, Mr. Maynard said that we are going to be a striving community. We still are striving and it's two thousand and twenty. Campaign features. I know Paul's gonna talk about this, so I'm not gonna talk too much about the surveys and town halls. But public recognition's campaign, we'll get signs out, local businesses. That way, when we do our surveys and stuff like that, the community's helping us. The businesses are helping us, the businesses are talking to us. How can we go in businesses and be able to push what we're looking for? The Maynard Together page, webpage, resources, how can we push this out? How can we get the data that we need to come back in? Promoting our signature items, you know, our, our logo and all that good stuff. Campaign on social media. And Maynard Resource Map, being able to show what's in Maynard, not just, you know, the names of the streets, but being able to show our businesses, being able to show what our community's out there. You know, the community centers, all this good stuff that is in Maynard and be able to show. Because one of the things that I've learned here in the past is, there's a lot of people that don't know what's in Maynard and what is offered in Maynard. So, being able to resource those things, but when we go out to communities, when we go out to businesses, be able to, like, my wonderful colleague, Yolanda, being able to know what her resource is. How do we push Libation Station? How do we push this team's stuff out? You know, and I've been here a long time, you know, and I still don't know everything that Maynard has to offer. And this class has been wonderful because I'm learning every time I step into this room with our lovely dear Debbie. So, Debbie, Debbie's given us a lot of great information to know what's going on, but we're just nine people. There's a lot of people in Maynard. Thank you.
Thank you, Felix. My colleagues have done a good job of communicating our mission as well as the Maynard Together campaign. So, I'll be further discussing the two signature events we intend to conduct to get to the heart of the residents. First is a community survey in the greater Maynard area. We opted for a survey because we felt like the community really needed to be heard in a tangible way. Also, as Asia mentioned, because we didn't want to create a project, we chose to implement that idea on behalf of the whole community. We are seeking to provide a seat at the table as best as we can to those that warrant and or need. We intend to launch the survey in December. The survey will be conducted only once and contain approximately six to ten questions that ask those answers about their needs and desires for the community. We are hoping for at least two thousand or ten percent of those surveyed to respond. In addition, the survey will be offered both online and in person. The term door-to-door references in-person communication, obviously nearing the midst of a pandemic as a result, we will seek to conduct these interactions in both the smartest and safest means possible. If lack of notice is determined not to be a viable option, we envision conducting at least one pop-up event within the community to allow the residents to complete the survey. We feel like a survey leverages our relationship with the city of Maynard and within the community to ensure that city leadership receives the, uh, receives the thoughts and community, thoughts of the community or residents are giving them needs to be heard. Furthermore, responsible shape the focus of our second signature event, which is a group of virtual town hall meetings. Our cohort has sensitively planned for the town hall meeting to take place in January, February, and March. We will use the feedback from the survey to determine the topics, demographics, and our audience that we will seek for participation. Additionally, we intend to use a well-known platform that we hope residents are promoting. Our cohort graduates in Maynard, therefore, we estimate upon the time of town hall meeting will leave ourselves time to aggregate that actual data and information viewers. The results from the survey and town hall meeting will then be presented to the city for use as well as for consideration used by future leadership manor cohorts. As a reiteration of our mission, we believe in giving residents, which includes ourselves, our friends and family, as well as your own, and those with a community of voice. Therefore, we envision that these two events will strengthen the relationship within the community between city leadership and our greater community. Thank you.
So, how are we gonna do this? First thing we wanna do, again, my name is Chris Kekelvin. Uh, the first thing we wanna do, we wanna reach out to key partners. So, our first partner being, uh, of course, City Mayor. Um, and I just wanted to, again, Debbie just helped us navigate this day, so thank you so much. Uh, having the layers on my deck, I'm sure you guys would be a great partner for us. Uh, this county, uh, so Travis County, uh, working out with, uh, Commissioner Williams' office, our local school district, and also the greater of the Maynard Chamber of Commerce. And one thing that's not listed on here, because we do not have a full list of them, is our local NGOs and other community partners that are right here in Maynard. Uh, part of our survey and part of our town halls, we wanna be able to identify these people so we know what services are happening here. Um, just really quick, on my way here, there was two things I found out that were in Maynard that I didn't know. Um, literally on my way here. Uh, one, Jim's has a car wash, I used to go all the way to the east side to wash my car. Uh, I don't look like the automakers would like to, you know, keep the elbow in there. Um, and the second part was that there was a dance video that was going on at this time. And I didn't know both of those things exist on my way here. Just I think from the Leadership Maynard program, I started thinking about Maynard a little bit differently and all the things that are here, I just didn't know about. So, those are our key partners that we wanna be able to produce. Um, and our implementation stage. So, the first thing we wanna do is format, format the, uh, Maynard Together campaign strategy guide. So, this is actually gonna be a guide, it's gonna talk about how we can, um, execute this program. Uh, we want a detailed executive execution calendar, uh, which is gonna include our social media and our signature event content, so that everybody who wants to be on board knows exactly how they can play a part within this space. Uh, we also wanted to, uh, develop public relations content, including the logo signage survey, um, the development, uh, for the program, town hall format, and then also getting a verbal okay or a MOU from our community partners, so that everybody understands what their role is. Uh, we also understand that with the ETJ, that there's a lot of things that are in this, their Maynard area, but are not Maynard. And so, we wanna make sure that everybody's able to serve by things that are within their local, uh, reach. So, that's our implementation plan. Our evaluation plan, how do we wanna make sure that we're evaluating this program? And how do we want to stress who's accountable when it comes down to May? Is that we wanna make sure that we have, um, at least two thousand surveys or ten percent of the greater Maynard areas within the ETJ. We know it's growing daily, so that number, hopefully, as we start to get some more data in, you know, that, that probably will happen to go up. The two thousand might not be enough, but I do feel like we have two thousand people in Maynard getting our surveys in, that's a great start to figure out what we need to do and what are some of the community needs and gaps in space. The other thing we wanna do, we wanna be able to track and align our community social services, um, which are developing this campaign. So, we talked about these NGOs, uh, other things that are happening within the Maynard, within the Maynard space. If we were to have a local business, work for a local town hall, or they a local community organization, and that relationship came from the Maynard Together campaign, we wanna be able to track that growth to show that we have the community integration and the community's actually working together to better community and provide more social services. And the last thing we wanna do, as Paul talked about, um, was gather, analyze, and report the survey data and our town hall data. So, survey data is gonna be qualitative, uh, quantitative, and the town hall data will be qualitative and make sure that you guys have records of that. So, that's tracking the trends, checking the coding, making sure all that stuff is, exists. Um, and also, we're gonna have to reach out to other community partners to make sure, because that's not gonna be something that none of us can do, we're gonna need some community help on that data, because two thousand surveys is a lot. Having four or three town halls, there's gonna be a lot of information to come in. So, we're gonna have to find some different processes to do it. So, we know we have a lot of work ahead of us, but, you know, I think our expected, uh, results is really gonna be key and it's really what's gonna fuel us to get there and not give up in a miserable way. So, our expected results, what they look like. We wanna encourage citizens to engage in asset-based community development, right? When we talked about our program and going through our classes, one thing we realized that stood out to me is that there was no social service department here in Maynard. Right, we had a really great discussion about that. So, if there's nothing that's from the city of Maynard, that means the people in Maynard have to provide that space. All right, we know we have the food banks, we know we have the, the food giveaways, we know we have this other social services that are happening going into the holiday space, that's gonna be great, but we have to find a way to leverage more community partners within that space to serve all the different communities. Um, especially all the different, uh, development areas that are coming in within Maynard. Uh, the second thing we wanna do, we wanna introduce tangible and cheap little projects for the city of, of Maynard to consider. Uh, this is something that's gonna be happening past us, so the next class that comes on, uh, to come on, is to give them a space, they don't have to start from zero like we did. So, let's give them a good foundation. Uh, the third part of our expected results is create a platform for the exhibition of Maynard class. As I said, using those projects. And then the last part is to really just develop and empower community. Um, I know it sounds really simple, but we, as a community is constantly growing, constantly getting new figures, right? We wanna be able to have a space where people can come and really see how they can be a part of Maynard and what that future looks like, right? And also, as we was talking about, we wanna really rally the older Maynard part of the community here and really make sure that everybody's moving on the same page. And that's something that we can, we can do. All right, at this time, I won't take any questions from the council.
Mr. Chris.
Yes, sir.
In your evaluation, uh, you say the Maynard area, is that gonna include the Shadow Glen and all the public improvement districts and public utility districts around Maynard?
Absolutely, so we're talking about the Maynard area, we're talking about the Maynard ETJ. It's gonna include all of Maynard and not just Maynard's property.
Thank you.
Uh, great presentation by the team. So, I, I, I like under, I'm gonna go slide by slide here. So, I like on slide number three, three things I highlighted. Hearts of faith, making a difference, love for self-nutishment. Uh, I, I think any material that you do, if you're able to incorporate those three things, uh, I think would be ideal, huge, and ties in the overall concept of the campaign that you're talking about. I, I, I did, I, I did on slide four, which is the same as slide five, did, did I highlight, how are you going to go about with the different objectives? And under slide six, um, I would love for your Maynard Together, you know, this is nothing but just recommendations. Y'all can say the heck with it, Mayor don't know what he's talking about, it's whatever you want to, right? Your, your class. Um, we got the Maynard's Community Collaborative, so I would love for y'all's campaign to be a subset of that. Right? Not, not to necessarily do, do what we're trying to do with the Maynard's Community Collaborative, but I think a great, uh, community subset of what we're trying to do with the Maynard's Community Collaborative. Um, you, you all, y'all brainstormed that, I mean, uh. Number one on here is surveys and town halls. Uh, I would recommend tying that into our twenty thirty comprehensive plan and the surveys and the questionnaires that are gonna be, uh, occurring with that. So, you're not duplicating efforts. I think you can help impact potentially the surveys because you're from Maynard, right? To be able to help with the individuals that, that end up potentially getting hired to, to do this. Um, so, I think it's a big bank for the block, so I'd say connect it to that. Uh, Councilman Harvey, Tom, Tom and some others are a part of that committee and whatnot, so I'd say tie it in the bag. Um, two, your public relations campaign originally came to mind for me was what we started doing this year for elections. And, and how do we continue to build upon that of better informing and equipping the community of what things they need to be asked, what things they need to be researching, uh, informing them of what is going on in the city, where the city's trying to go, and, uh, asking those types of questions to those running for office, whether it be school district or whether it be for a city council, to help further, as you're talking about moving together, building together, uh, in, in the different aspects of, of the objectives. Uh, that was one of the things that just came to mind on there. Signature items, I, I wrote Debbie all over that one. So, uh, I, I, I think that'd be a great thing. You know, we started doing that here from council side, the lapel pins, we have, uh, UBI has, um, silver lapel pins for, for individuals, like you all going to the program and others that are, uh, identified as, uh, representatives of the city. So, other things that we can do to, to really, more than just a, here's something else just to put in, in, in a closet or a drawer, but what can we really do where in, in, in signify the city? Uh, Maynard Resource Map, I wrote Debbie all over this one as well. Uh, but I think the, the resource map also, uh, I think ties into some of the, some of the aspects when we're talking about our economic development. And this year, twenty twenty-one, I think was kinda key about y'all presenting now, when we're still in quarter one, and the whole plan effort for twenty twenty-one is economic development. And how can, uh, this messaging you all tie into what we're trying to do for twenty twenty-one help in informing? Because a lot of stuff we're gonna send back to the community to vote off for. And, uh, you know, we talked about, do we wanna try to create a historical commission? Do we wanna probably try to create a arts and film commission? That ties into some of the, uh, materials and items that I've talked about in, in, in the, in the breaching of old and new Maynard and so forth. So, I'd say definitely, you, you're on the right of where we're trying to go. I think just making sure what y'all are trying to do, uh, is, is, um, not, not saying align the veteran, but you all know what we're trying to do and where you all might be able to just easily slide in and assist with that growth and, 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 and the launching of certain things that we wanna do. Going to slide five is more of a question. When you, I'm sorry, slide ten, slide ten, I'm looking at five on the page. Uh, slide ten, is that slide ten? Uh, key partners. Okay, so slide ten, when you talk about key partners, what is the expected outcome? Or what are you looking for in the partners? Because what comes to mind to me is, we have the disaster relief group, we have the Maynard Wellness, uh, group, we have, um, Meaning for Christ, we have, um, the Lions Club and so forth. So, what type of, for us, what type of partners are you looking for that we can also be assisters in reaching out and seeing if they wanna be partners?
So, all those places, I wanna talk initially on the slide about the invisible NGOs that we don't know, that we all need to talk about.
Okay.
Um, and we need to start to create a list and a resource page where people can say, I'm moving to Austin, or I'm moving to Maynard, here's where I, my interests are, and here's the organizations that serve that, right? It's sort of talking about, um, the Arts Commission or Arts Council, if it even even though it exists. Okay, so how do we start to get involved with them and then find out if they need to, need to do digital, um, Zoom talk? So, so those stuff like that, and so people can keep on going and, and really just know what's going on, it's really information. So, it's a two-way information pool, so it's not only from us getting information for the community, also getting organizations from, information from organizations to the community and community to the organizations.
And I think, yes. And then definitely ties back into the overall intent behind the Maynard Community Collaborative. Yeah. Is to get all the voices across communication. Uh, if you haven't, it's been updating the charter, so that description is there. We're gonna be working on, I'm working to further flesh it out, so. Uh, and then slide thirteen, uh, bullet number two. Uh you know, as we're talking about future years of of leadership Maynor and hopefully uh whoever ends up being my predecessor continues to say the city addresses. Tying the state of city address into potentially what the campaign or or project will be for future leadership mayors. Um because with our state of city address, the the whole intent is to lay out what uh one, two, three specific goals are to accomplish for that year. I think that would help make sure that the city is definitely one hundred percent fully on board because it ties, ties into each other. Uh bullet three, um bullet three, if you can just give ideas down the road. For the next presentation of of what type of platforms y'all are kind of looking for?
Business income from our survey and our data, we don't know. That's that was one of the biggest secrets we had. I really want to give the agency a shout out for not getting this. We we started going down the road to create something, but we didn't know what the community needed.
Right.
And so part of this process is for the next leadership class to say, hey, last year's surveys, what it says, here's all the areas you should look at. So we don't know what the platform is.
And then and then the last bullet would be kind of caveat to that, informing us of what type of empowerment is needed.
Absolutely.
Uh anybody else that have any questions or remarks?
I just had, um a couple of years back, uh Chamber of Commerce had thought about doing a half blunder of a booklet with uh businesses for um. New homeowners. And we had devised a plan where each of the businesses here in Maynor could uh present an ad. It would be compiled into a booklet. And then conveniently, we would have our building inspector leaving on countertop as he did a final inspection on a home. It wouldn't get to all of the older homes, but having copies available here when we open back up might serve that purpose too. So I encourage you to maybe look at maybe something like that too, instead of a map of where everything is, but something that's manageable. And can be in a drawer where people can look through and find, oh, there's a hairdresser, there's a seamstress, there's a barber, whatever.
So I don't want me to continue this one on, but you remember the 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 codes, the the QR codes, the uh, we don't do that no more either.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I was thinking about something that was a bit too many, but.
Mr. Mayor, just one caveat or tag on your uh on slide five, organization of community services for change. I have two questions on the panel. How many of you are veterans? Okay. That's one of the most underserved sections of our community. It it's across all of Tennessee's. All age groups. We even have World War Two veterans here still alive. Unfortunately, there's only two. Uh when I first died here at fourteen. So if you could do something with that and give them some services or their families. It would be something unique in this area because of the fact that we do have a lot of veterans here and we get them more every day.
Any other uh questions, comments, remarks from the council?
I do want to commend you guys. I'm not trying to just decide what you think Maynor needs and going and asking them and finding out what they need. And I do like the idea of the tracking. I think that's gonna make a difference as well.
Thank you.
Kudos on that.
Go ahead, Harvey. I'll just say good job. Looking forward to the work, so. Anybody else?
I I mentioned that Debbie, when she originally mentioned what y'all were thinking, that this ties in. Timing wise with everything we're trying to do with regard to getting information from the community. About what the community needs and time and work and comprehensive planning. So I'm excited to see what the results are.
I'm just gonna talk after this time right now. Oh, I have a question after I say, you know, graduation, because it sounds really great what you guys have done up with. But um with the numbers from the survey, you wanted the two thousand. If you happen to not get two thousand by the deadline that you want, are you gonna? Keep pushing forward or are you gonna like move all the dead to the next block or anything else?
Yeah, so it is like.
So I think that, I think that that's a great question. Um so earlier I talked about the fact that we were trying to grab uh in March. And so even though we have April to aggregate this data, if push comes to shove, we also still have that time if we need to. Uh push the town hall meetings back to allow us to meet our goal, we can do so. So one of the ideas behind that we discussed internally was April as a flexible uh time. So that if we need more uh time, we do so.
Any final remarks? They're being, I appreciate it.
Thank you for talking.
You know, the the it just looks so bad. It looks bad, but I don't care.
All right. Moving on to our second presentation, recognition of outgoing council members. Miss Maria Amisquah, Councilwoman, the honorable. This is the City of Maynor, Texas presents to Maria Amisquah with sincere appreciation. For her leadership abilities and dedicated support and commitment to the citizens of the City of Maynor as council member. Placed to November two thousand and sixteen to November twenty twenty. Whereby she has supported the mission of local government of the City of Maynor, which is to preserve and enhance the quality of life. For the community through highly valued, open and effective municipal services.
I just want to say thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be a part of a great team. I look forward to continuing to work with you guys. And please reach out to me if you guys need anything. I'm always happy to help with. I'll be back. Yay!
So other two, uh we're not able to make it, uh Councilman Danny Starfro and Councilwoman Valerie Dodge, and I'll give these two. Just in here? Okay, sounds good. Now moving on to public comments, have you had any public comments? No public comments. Moving on to reports. Reports about items of community interest on which no action will be taken. City managers' reports, Tom.
Uh first thing on the list is the CARE Act, uh interlocal agreement and the previous. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh first thing on the list is the CARES Act, uh interlocal, and Lydia, our finance rep is prepared to speak on that.
Good evening, Councilwoman Maynor. Uh so we finally received our first disbursement. Our first request was um initially fifty six thousand dollars. And after going through um an extensive and tedious and painful uh interaction with Travis County. We um it was determined um that the amount that we requested needed to be reduced. Um from that amount down to um forty two thousand dollars. And so the forty two thousand dollars was paid out to us, as a matter of fact, on Thursday. Uh and so we did receive that. Um as of right now, the second disbursement that we will try and recoup some of the COVID expenses. Um we're having to go back and reaudit what we did, what we had in our current system. Um and finding out that some of the expenses that we were told were allowable are not now. And it was for um reasons of record management for it. At the time, EPSL was not in place when COVID first hit. The different criterias were changing. Um from the moment that COVID hit and all the way to now of what the federal government will reimburse for and what they will allow. Um and the CARES Act itself had also changed and morphed. Uh on April first, they allowed employers to provide um emergency pay sick leave, EPSL. That didn't fall into certain criterias, how that was supposed to be documented, how that was supposed to be um paid out. We didn't receive any of that type of guidance at all, we still don't, um of how to. How to keep better track of that time. Um so any corrections that were done um after the fact are being kicked back to us. So.
Any any update on the programs that we tried to to launch and the final information that kind of gave back to us?
At the time when um we did receive my backup. So we had had several ideas of. Um of different programs we could use uh some of the CARES Act money and funding, anywhere from utility assistance. To um mortgage and or rental assistance, um P P E expenses for businesses and for uh citizens. Um and unfortunately, all of those were rejected by Travis County. Uh we also had other programs that were directly uh that could directly help small businesses. And again, that was also rejected by Travis County. Um. And so right now, everything's been rejected by Travis County. And unfortunately, when we were given back some of feedback of, oh, hey, now you can actually. This other program that we originally rejected before in August. I think you can go ahead and try for it now. That left me with often three days, four days to come up. With all the information in order to try and submit for it, and that was just not enough time to actually move forward and present it to Travis County.
I appreciate it. The reason, um you know, we had uh. Tom and I were talking a while back and having these reports periodically to make sure everybody's impressed of what's going on. Uh and especially to be able to answer the questions that may come from the community, but also to be able to do some name dropping here. And the name drops I want to do here is that uh even though we were allocated six hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Um there was minimal guidance on what needed to be done paperwork wise. And that process changed every time as new ways of creating barriers were saying no. And even with us working weeks, months, trying to get information from the county.
And during my vacation.
And during our vacation. It's time that, you know, it's not a fact that six hundred and fourteen thousand dollars was approved for the City of Maynor to have access to. It is the piece of, it was the piece of, they made it overly complicated on purpose to make sure we were not able to access it. So I just want us to know, so by the end of the year, when all that money goes back and the the news media, whoever wants to say that this much amount of money went back. That was supposed to go down to the lowest local level, it was nothing our way. Because we made sure as a team. Tom, Lydia, Debbie and everybody to do whatever we possibly could be able to do to at least get something approved and pushed out. So I appreciate you highlighting that. Does anybody have any questions, remarks uh for for Lydia or or Tom on this? Uh I'll just say thank you for picking up all that uh that learning curve and all that information to to get those things submitted. So uh on top of everything else you were, you know, slaying away at, so appreciate you. Thanks.
Thank you.
And I I want to add my appreciation too. I was here during the times when these things were so frustrating to try and sort out. Um and just frustrating in general, uh the amount of time that was being spent trying to um. Get what people call is free money, and it's not free money, there's salaries and everything else that went into trying to get these applications approved.
The the one thing I'll add is uh Councilman Harvey and I, last week, we we had our, I had a conversation with the Little County Judge, Amy um Amy Brown. And uh relating, you know, some of the frustrations that went on in that if there is another iteration, it behooves them. To whatever program they create at the county level, they open an opportunity for the cities to piggyback on that program. And be able to then determine how much of the money allocated to the cities are specifically accessible through that program. For entities the city identifies. Because any other way we'll run right back into this situation again. So.
And I'm anticipating that because of where we are with numbers and uh not just in Texas, but nationwide, global. Um I do see another round of COVID uh CARES Act money to come through. Um it would just. It would be smarter and easier uh to. To really look at what we just went through with 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 the county and better uh and and build a better process for it.
Better better uh guidelines, specific guidelines.
And then I I'll tell you, out of all the cities within Travis County, only like three of them actually submitted anything. You know, you saw this spreadsheet. And I mean, it was basically just reimbursement and stuff. There was nothing that you would say, oh, they really helped people.
I believe Ludbrook was the only city that had a small uh small business program that was approved by the county. No other city had one that that I saw of of that spreadsheet.
Any last remarks, questions? None? Appreciate it.
Thanks, Lydia.
Uh emergency management basic plan update.
I'm gonna let Chief take that one off.
Go ahead, Chief.
Well, like our last update, this is a long and complicated road that we're on. The good thing about it is we're still covered under the Travis County Emergency Management Plan, who's our partner when we come down to disasters. Lots of reviews of interlocal agreements, um assessments of, you know, what the things that we can cover specific to the city. And uh we had talked with Travis County and joining in their next review of their plan to hopefully uh get some better piggybacking and. Uh and assistance in in our plan.
So um we have all these cases that are going on in the education facilities. What part of that for us as the emergency management committee, um do we need to go from observing, listening, being informed? To proactive questioning, requesting sit downs and potential further dialogues with county and higher?
Are you talking about the ones at the school district? Yeah, what's going on there? Well, the. Well, the pandemic is, was not written in the state, the county, emergency management plan. Nobody really was prepared. I mean, in, in, as far as emergency management, it goes. The health authority for our city, for all of Travis County is Austin Travis County Health Authority. So our role in this, especially when we see cases in the school, is educating our public. Educating our, our citizenry, providing events where they can get masks or sanitizer, things that they need. And, but as far as responsibility on the city to, to do anything other than what, you know, what we're doing is very limited. The, this type of emergency falls under our health authority. And we can probably ask them how we can assist them in serving our community, which, you know, we've done. And the best thing that we can do is educate our public and, and assist in them receiving the things they need to help stay healthy.
Yeah, the only thing that I added is in, in our conversation with, with the new county judge, I, I, I did express my frustration that conversations are happening at the county level between the health officials and the school districts without any type of information provided, situational information being provided to, as you just said, the health and safety official, right, for this pandemic. So we can be able to plan as needed on the emergency basic plan based off of exposure potentiality, right? So just let me know if there's any other information or anything like that as you're still updating the emergency basic plan to be more holistic in nature. If there's things that we need to be addressing with the new county judge.
For sure. You know, the school district situation, that is, that is something that, you know, they are gonna, it's just something. That's a lot to deal with. I, I'm, I, I feel bad for what they have to deal with in case, you know, it's, it's shown to be positive in the school. There's a lot of new parts.
Any other questions, comments, remarks from, from council? There being none, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to downtown revitalization plan.
Scott, I don't know if you were gonna speak to this or not. I, I was prepared to. We had up until COVID, a plan for revitalization that would have paid for the majority work that we had thought would attract folks to the older part of town. And COVID, of course, put an end to that. And so all of the funding that would have taken care of upgrading, updating most of the businesses has gone away. We do not have a plan in place for the city at this point. And I'm hoping that the comprehensive plan will help guide us in some direction. The burden for the upgrades now would fall on the individual property owners. And, and so now might not be the best time to ask them to be making some of those revitalization efforts when they're struggling to, to keep, keep the doors open. But it will be part of the comprehensive plan. It needs to be part of the plan moving forward. And we will solicit the information that's gathered in the survey that's going to be done to try and find ways to help. City funds are, are limited and so it, it would be difficult for us to find money to, to make some of those changes.
Any questions, remarks, comments? We're going to downtown revitaliz- revitalization plan update? All right.
I guess I'm going.
Yeah, I'm trying to get the name before I say it. I had, I've talked with Kate in Stanford, who we met in the governor's office a while back. And she mentioned that for us to stay in contact and gave, she gave me another name of lady by the name of Lisa, that works in the Texas Engineering Extension Service, the economic development team. And talked about, once we get through the comprehensive planning process, that, that office can then work with us on some, some of the funding opportunities they have to support.
Okay.
Put on your notes as well. We had, we had a meeting, when did we have it? Last month with the regional, the regional rep for the economics office. Yeah, you, you, you're on the call.
I'm definitely, I can't remember the name.
Yes.
So they have a new regional rep for our area out of the government economic office. We talked with her for about an hour or so. She was talking about potentially trying to come out of here early 2021 to get eyes on the city.
That's right.
We sent her the 2030 comprehensive plan proposal, the economics smart book, the downtown plan that we had challenged from that one organization from National League of Cities, CitStar. So we sent her everything. She reviewed it before we had the meeting. So I believe that's gonna be our local contact that they just hired. So if, if you don't mind, I'll be adding that to your, your list of people that you're engaging regarding this. Excuse me, message. I owe you the name and the contact number. I gotta save them on my city phone. My city phone, my hair's gonna call me on my city phone right now. Anything else regarding the downtown revitalization plan update? Being none. All right. Moving to the water tower painting.
So our city engineers, larger office, most of you know that J Engineering was purchased by a larger firm. There are folks that worked in a larger firm that have expertise in water towers. They are preparing to, or for us to go to bid. There's, there's a couple of components here and one will drive the other. If the paint on the tower, the existing paint is still adhering in the way it was intended years ago, the cost of this will not as much as it would be if they have to completely sand that down and go through lead paint remediation. And so there's a couple of aspects of this Frank and I are talking about and I asked him about it. He said, within the next few weeks, we'll, we'll have a, an update for how to proceed with this, knowing there's two possible outcomes and how a contract might be written for, for both.
The, the biggest thing, at least from, from, from me on this one to, to council transformation is this is one of like about three or four things that we, we talked about as trying to at least have out for bid before the end of quarter one of 2021. Things that we believe would be, if you put the focus on them, we can have them done and have it accomplished. And then really fully just focus on the economic development stuff for quarter two, three, four. So any questions, remarks?
Well, I wanted to remind council and for the benefit of the new council members, this is a project that can be paid for with hot funds.
Oh, that's awesome. Where's the money coming?
Yeah, where's the money coming from? And so it's, it's a qualifying expenditure from the standpoint that the tower itself is historic.
And that we, we delayed this for 2020. It was brought up, and you, all y'all know, this is something that's been asked by the community multiple times. Council, I think around the middle of the year, we just made the conscious decision it wasn't a good time to spend money, even though that money can only be used for that purpose, to spend the money with everything else that's going on. So we wanted to wait just because optics and, and whatnot. It just wouldn't be the right thing to do.
And, and it would have been a piece of that revitalization effort too, that we thought was going to happen. And because it isn't, or it's been postponed, I'm gonna look for another way to tie it into our 150th birthday in 2020, 2022. The tower is something we thought we were gonna wind up doing regardless. And so we, we may as well move forward with it and at least have something for people to look at in the old version.
I know it has in the past been brought up by lots of community that wanted something with the tower on board. I just wanted to know where the money was coming from.
Yeah.
Any other questions, remarks? Go ahead.
Tom, when you talk about city engineer group, did they find anything or have they even inspected the tower to see if there's gonna be any structural reformation or reformation that they need to do done before they apply the paint because of the age of the tower?
Yeah, the, the power, the tower itself isn't functioning. Many years ago, an ice storm took the center pipe out, so it's not holding water now. But it was structurally sound at the time. There's no reason to believe that that has changed. I think as part of any project, we would be doing some type of inspection on it. And I know our guys are looking at it occasionally as well.
Thank you. Give me additional. Go ahead.
Just the light tower and all of our towers.
Just one.
The tower, the motto, the beauty.
This would be the, the, the other towers don't qualify as historic. And so that we would be obligated to pay our city funds for those. Those would be an easier, easier project because they're probably after lead paint usage. And that's the issue we've got with the original towers, the potential lead paint.
I know, you know, someone want the, the, the tower with the Mustang repainted. That's, that's an approval by the school board.
You said it didn't belong to us, I'm done.
Any other questions, remarks? If none, moving on to economic office.
We don't have an economic office. We do economic development by way of our kids and our turs and our 3D agreements. And I know council has talked about wanting to establish an economic office. And I, I think there needs to be some homework done. Because of our contributions to that metro, we're limited with regard to sales tax and our ability to be a 4A or a 4B city. And so one of the, it, it may be possible that somebody on city staff could handle economic development, but, or that we could annually help fund an economic development office. So, so those decisions are, are gonna have to be made. At this point though, the budget, as everyone knows from last, well, just a couple of months ago, we were holding it in line with regard to what we had and were expecting to have.
No, I know that we, we can't fund economic office. But if, if our call correct, the council did approve the creation of one, what we were gonna be doing are, I think, I believe the guidance was figure out what the duty description would probably need to be, figure out what, you know, have all of the, that stuff in place. So if, and then all we have to do is try to figure out a potential income or funding for it. So just wanna make sure that we, we're at least doing that. It doesn't have to happen overnight, but at least doing that. So as we're, we go into reviewing different ways of potentially establishing revenue streams to do some of the things we need to do, we have that stuff in place. Or someone's willing to, I don't know, do it as a, a, a graduate project or something. I don't know. We, we have something as far as the duty description and things that, that they could probably be able to use.
Well, and, and speaking with regard to the economic, I know we had wanted to do what you referred to as a deep dive. And I have been able to set that up for January, one of the first Saturdays in January. So it might be appropriate to wait until after we hear from our speaker, our expert, before we head down to us, excuse me.
No problem.
May not, may not work out for us.
And like I said, the reason of doing these reports is just to just make sure that, you know, there's things that can move forward, good, if not, where at least we're talking. So six months down the road, we're not saying we didn't, we didn't do anything. That we might as well just go for. Next up, assistant city manager. Oh, does anybody have any comments, remarks on the economic office? If not, go ahead.
Who are you going past? I was just gonna, I was gonna add to that, because I was, that was one of the things that I did want to, I guess, follow up and, and see where we, uh, see if there was a conservative or passive timeline on getting those descriptions or, or duty pieces. Because once we get that, we can start, you know, trying to be creative to figure out how to get some of the, the work done that doesn't pass city staff. Or at least if, in the other committees, we can look at some of those things and say, hey, well, who can do this? Or how can we have a, can you do this and do that? It's all right.
Any additional remarks? There being none. Moving on to assistant city manager.
I don't know how to respond to this actually. In one way, in one way that it would be helping me and the other, it would be spending money that we don't have right now. We do have a position for an assistant city manager. It's a position I held for a number of years. And so it, it is included within the hierarchy of the city. It's just an unfunded position. As we move forward, that may be something that we want someone to have some economic expertise in. I think those are things we can massage as we move forward.
Yeah, this is just rehashing a conversation that we had previously on positions. And, you know, as you said, it was already listed and identified, assistant city manager. If we were to come up funding, a good, bad position, also be a double or triple one of economic grants or something for those three areas that, that, that we, we need personnel in.
Yeah, it, it's possible. We all wear a couple of different hats, so.
So, okay. Any, any questions, remarks, comments regarding assistant city manager? If not, moving on to, go ahead. You take it too long.
We were looking that way. I would say in addition to maybe a passive timeline or like we're, we're able to get this stuff to you by such and such date, maybe even exploring now, I guess, or, or same thing, passively conservatively, looking at what needs to happen financially. How we can start looking into, to, you know, if this happens and here or there, we could be able to do this or that. And trying to maybe put a cost to one or both, you know, one meaning that they're combined in, in one position or two, they're separate. So we can just kind of know what needs to happen financially. Just for, I guess, while we're new and returning, we even have this conversation about where we need to go as a city to generate more revenue and what's necessary and, and looking at our staff and the growth that we're anticipating. And, you know, do we have the capacity, or do we have capacity in all these areas? Like, do we have capacity in buildings, capacity with staff? Do we need more staff? What's the workload for? What's what we anticipate coming for the current folks that are here? And so those conversations that we've been having. And I know feel, especially me, I feel like that if we want to ensure that we grow smartly and can respect the different things that the community is asking us to do as far as preserving historical areas and, but growing smartly so that we can have the revenue to do more things, we need to have time and attention to that on a regular basis. And we can't do that with the current, with just what we have. We can, but it's gonna take way longer for us to make these opportunities. And so really thinking about how we can be greater, but also add to our staff so that we don't miss any more big opportunities as a city. But also so that we can meet those demands of preserving and growing.
Any additional remarks? All right, then moving on to the two, oh, I'm gonna say two, two, oh, time's up. The 2050 comprehensive plan request for proposal update. Councilman Harvey.
I'm not going to go all the way down yet. Go right here. If that's okay with you all. All right. So I got some notes in front of you all, so I'm not gonna be, be long. But I just wanted to kind of let you know what we had. We had nine proposals. Our candidates had local, state, national experience.
Um, our candidates had local, state, uh, national experience. Um, and then our team members listed there, and we've been at this for about, what, three weeks now, Scott? Three or four weeks, something like that, and, um, we've had some good folks that were looking at, uh, that had experience with, uh, preserving historic, uh, historical preservation in districts and stuff like that, so you know, we have our community members that wanted to make sure we're preserving, um, some of our, our hood history and some old areas and, uh, older areas in Mainor as well as ensuring that we have a plan that includes opportunities down the line for that, so that people can live, work, and play, um, here in Mainor. Um, and then people that have transportation, water, or experience, so those are things we've been looking for in that application process, and there will be better requests. Um, I'm here today because I wanted to just, uh, one, give you that update, but ask, but also give you an opportunity to ask for, to ask specific questions, I'm not gonna answer them. You want to ask me specific questions to take back to the, uh, team, so that we can make sure that that's answered by the folks that, that propose.
So just take and put the comments.
Yeah.
So, so you'd say, so if you have, so if there's something specific you want us to be sure we ask or have or consider when selecting the, uh, the, uh, the firm to come back to us, uh, when we come back for a vote, then please ask that question now. Uh, I don't wanna get, I don't wanna get into giving you all the details, what we've already read, but I'll make sure that your question and your specific concern is brought to the, uh, team, and we will answer it, and we will consider, um, all those things that you want us to consider. So, uh, with just a brief amount of minutes for, uh, for that, and I'll write it down and I'll take it to the team.
So one thing I'll say, and I, I said this to Councilman Harvey, uh, before I came up on that time, I didn't follow up to on that one, is, uh, the basic thing I said was, if it doesn't feel right, and doesn't feel like it's gonna give us what we need, then we need to relook and do another call. Because we don't need to be spending taxpayer dollars just to do the plan because we scheduled to do the plan. Um, and, and that's one of the biggest things I charted, uh, Councilman Harvey Westwood, reviewing, getting analyzing, getting, he's talking to everybody else to make sure it fits into what we are saying and the community is saying needs to happen, needs to be analyzed and reviewed for the city. So that is, that's just my two cents on that. Uh, anybody else? He said make me a list.
Yeah, and you can, you can write it down, you don't have, don't feel pressured to just do it right now, uh, just make sure you get to me before the end of, uh, tonight.
We, we, we might be here all night.
So, yeah, we have plenty of time, we have a good agenda. Uh, so, so I just wanna make sure you had an opportunity, uh, to think of, uh, we've, we've taken consideration of a lot of things that we've talked about here, during, now, for my council meetings, we've taken consideration, uh, the data and the information that came from old, um, surveys, uh, surveys from communities, stuff like that and stuff we, so there, we're considering a lot of things, and definitely, I tell you that, um, if we don't, if it don't feel right, it don't look like we were prolonged, and we, and we make sure we get the right things, so I definitely said that, but any other questions or thoughts that anybody want me to write down? Um.
So like, Councilman Harvey, some of the questions I had, uh, well, this is what you're asking for at this time, so, um, just tell me that this isn't the right time. Like, my, I wanted to know, like, once we had the plan, like, would it address how often it would need to be updated to match our changing priorities and goals, would that be one of the things that will be discussed? Or I have questions about opportunities for economic diversity, making sure that we have that, we have confidence, addressing the problems and planning? Are those the kind of things you're looking for?
Yeah, I can write those, I'll, I'll put all those things in, and, and team, uh, we're, uh, kind of, um, we're gonna say those things when we're reviewing those proposals. I will say, though, the plan is, it's for multiple years, and so it's, uh, and it's, uh, the data is going to be collected from the community, uh, that's, that's part of the process, that's part of the proposal that we sent out, was that, um, there's a, a process of collecting community input about where we want to see our city over the next thirty years.
And, uh, uh, I think Harvey might be, it might be, um, kind of put it to add in there too, uh, some of the proposals that they received, I haven't read them, I haven't seen them, but they kind of give their vision of what the comprehensive plan should look like, where they believe certain priorities or focuses should be versus other areas. And so it's kind of their specialty, their uniquenesses, the people that they probably brought in to be a part of this project have tailored however their proposal is for the city of Mainor, and how they will approach it and the things that they will try to, try to develop or, or plan out, right? So questions or thoughts of, are there certain skills, are there certain focuses, are there certain, uh, specialties? Uh, are, are there, is, is one priority more important than another for, for downtown, right? So that way, when he's reading them, he can go say, this one is like totally off base on what they're talking about, and what they think should happen within the city of Mainor compared to this other one.
I think my question is, are they going to make sure that they're going to include all members of the community, not just, uh, like, our elderly, they're gonna take into consideration our elderly population and what might be needed for them? Um, both, when we're talking about, we need to live, work, and play here. Um, our elderly community would like some things provided for them. And also, you know, taking into consideration, a lot of times when parks and stuff are built, they're, they're built with playgrounds to wait for, but what about the older ones? Um, a lot of times, uh, our kids are out late at night doing stuff they have no business. Um, they need a place to be during the day that they can get tired. Also, we have, um, a homeless population here that, um, there's one that I, I, I know right now, that they're facing that situation right now, and they're not telling anybody. Um, how will we address that issue as well?
Anything else?
There being, uh, moving on to public hearings. I now open a public hearing to conduct, uh, the rezoning request for lot one, block A, Cottonwood Estates in being one point three eight acres more or less, and being located at fifteen five oh one U S Highway two ninety east, Eldon, Texas, from agricultural A to medium commercial C two.
Mayor, council members, don't let the Eldon, Texas, oh, yeah, but it's actually within the city of Mainor. Um, what we have is a, a gas station out there, is it Abram and some road?
Different.
Okay, I, I muddle that no matter how many times I try, uh, which was annexed, and it has its interim zoning, um, in order for them to, uh, do some things that they'd like to, um, they're seeking to get a C two zoning, which is appropriate for properties along, uh, U S Highway two ninety, and so, um, that is their request, just that they'd be allowed to go to C two. Um, I think this has been the plan in question, hasn't it, Scott? And the recommendation there was for approval.
All right, do I have any questions, remarks, comments?
I'm not sure where this is located, can someone add more points, everything?
Um, it's, you know, there's not much around it, to be honest with you, um, it's, it's east, uh, it's before you get to, uh, Ventoli, I don't know.
It's a little gas station all the way up to ninety on the right hand side, going towards, um.
Yeah, it's, it's, like I said, there's not much around it. Yeah, it just sits, it's in all. Yes, yes.
Any additional questions, remarks?
Question about the C two steps?
C two is appropriate for the, uh, property zone, kind of, eight hundred and fifty.
Is it, they just want the zoning for them to change it to that, or they had plans?
This is what they had requested.
Any additional questions, remarks?
Do we know why?
To park a, it looks like a cargo truck.
Yeah, they're, they're, they want the ability to have on the, uh, food truck. And we'll have an opportunity when we get to the ordinance to check further about that.
If there are no further comments, I have a motion to close the public hearing.
Mayor, I make a motion that we close the public hearing for, uh, conduct for the rezoning request for lot one, block A, Cottonwood Estates, and being one point three eight acres more or less, and being located at one five five oh one U S Highway ninety to ninety east, Eldon, Texas, from agricultural A to medium commercial C dash two.
Has been properly motioned, or seconded?
By seconded.
And seconded by Councilwoman Wallace. Uh, any questions to the motion? Go ahead.
Did the other, um, people who were notified, did they give any replies or anything like that?
No.
No names or names?
There, there are large properties out there, I think, I don't know that there was a lot of notification. From the standpoint, they're just a few quality. They're, they're large parcels.
Any additional questions to the motion? Questions to the motion, there being none, all those bearers in hand? None opposing, motion passes, moving on to, uh, opening a public hearing on a rezoning request for one lot, uh, lot one, block T, presidential heights phase four, and being one point three four one acres more or less, and being located at the northeast corner of Samuel Wilkes Way and George Mason Avenue, Mainor, Texas, from single family S F one to light commercial C one.
Mayor, council members, back when the, uh, development agreements were put together for uh, presidential land and subsequently presidential heights, there was a, a piece of property that might be appropriate for commercial zoning, and it had been stated in the development agreement that uh, the owners of this property would make application for C one zoning. At the time, we didn't have neighborhood business zoning, and so neighborhood business zoning would probably be the more appropriate zoning, its scale is more towards that of the residential neighborhood as opposed to a ninety-five percent impermeable cover allowance for C one. Uh, and so we've recommended that they move with, and, and council can do this, uh, lower the classification, uh, but we're recommending that, uh, neighborhood business be the category that's approved for there.
So neighborhood business versus C one?
C one, yes. And the agreement says they may apply for it or should apply for it, it doesn't mean that's the one you have to grant them.
So they requested C one, but the recommendation will be from council?
The recommendation for council would be that neighborhood business.
Okay, got it. Any, uh, questions, remarks? There being none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I would like to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
There probably motion, yeah, seconded? It's seconded. Uh, any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, all those bearers in hand? None opposing, motion passes. Moving on to public hearing number three, conduct a public hearing on rezoning request for lots eleven through twenty, block ten, town of Mainor, and being point sixty-six acres more or less, and being located along the two hundred block West Burton Street, Mainor, Texas, from light commercial C one to multifamily twenty-five in F two.
Uh, Mayor, council members, you may recall from recent discussions, the abandonment of the alley between the existing, uh, senior residential facility for the purposes of, uh, developing another similar, uh, building. Um, and so, uh, we were recommending approval, the previously, uh, elderly housing or age restricted housing was allowed under C one category, but it more appropriately fits to the manifest, or the multifamily, uh, two district, and so, um, we're recommending approval from C one, which does not allow that, uh, use of any more to the multifamily.
Yeah, uh, this one, the, the executive director of, forget Howard, Howard, what's his name? Um, they have already submitted for loans and so forth, to already, uh, move forward with developing housing out there. Uh, so this is, is, in, in action now from council to make sure, uh, that the landing, the land is properly zoned um, for what they believe is going to be approval to, to do. Uh, any additional questions, remarks? Go ahead.
Mayor, a question on this one. Um, there are approximately seventeen trees that have been marked for either removal or staying. They're one foot to four foot in diameter, they're many years old, some are probably historic to Mainor. I was wondering, in this proposal for this low cost of multifamily housing, are they going to destroy those trees or are they going to move them?
I don't have the answer to that question, I don't, I haven't seen a site plan, where, what we're doing is zoning for use. Um, if they were to remove the trees, they'd have to replant uh, somewhere else perhaps, or pay a fee for, uh, the amount of calipers that they're removing, so I, I don't know, Scott, have you seen a site plan at all, or, or no?
Are, are the trees on the area that we're talking about?
I, I'm sure there's trees and, and part of where the buildings might go, right?
That's why I'm asking, because of the fact that there are beautiful trees there, and the way they have them, there are about like seventeen trees, they have thirteen tagged.
Yeah.
So that tells me most likely, and whether they're tagged or, most likely to be where the buildings are.
Probably.
And like I said, one of them is four or five feet.
Look, I mean, uh, the, the only question I guess I have to is, the, the strip of land that we're talking about, are the trees on that strip of land?
Yes.
It is, okay, okay.
I, I just want to bring that up because of the fact that I know from prior time, uh, on the council, we do have the, what you talked about, Tom, the fees for replanting with the trees.
Right, they're, what they would do is, um, and Scott can answer more about the trees specifically, but they would make a, a request for a waiver to replace the caliper of trees, and council has in the past authorized a fee per caliper, um, if they can't put all those trees back on the one property, uh, and what it does is goes into a tree fund here with the city, and then we can use that money to plant trees in parks and things like that.
Okay, so, my question has been answered, they're not gonna be taken out and have nothing replaced, or nothing that the city can actually use after they have removed them, so?
There, there will be a landscape plan associated with this, I'm sure, but it won't have those big beautiful trees, it'll have probably several smaller trees. That someday will be big, but we probably won't see them.
Now, I would assume that when it comes to that plan, we, we could have that conversation if we were, would they plan to do with the trees? If there's a way for them to incorporate the trees, and if not, maybe if there's something that the city might be able to get all of the trees and maybe be able to do something with them before they, I mean, to me, I don't think it's all or nothing, just off of the approval here, I think there's discussion that can still occur and let them know that we do have interest in what's gonna happen with those trees, just because of the historical aspect of it.
And I just want to caution that if they submit a site plan and it complies with all of our requirements, it does not come back to council, it will be approved regardless of the trees. Um, what would come back to council is the waiver on the trees, or the fee for the trees.
I understand, I, I just seen other building projects where they, the, it's more historic trees, they actually dig them off, and then they ref They actually dig them up and then they replant them someplace within the city. And that's what I was thinking could be done with maybe two or three of those that are beautiful trees that are, like you said, very historic to Maynor.
I, I do think there's room to talk about some about the trees.
Yeah, I, I'm sure we, we have that leeway and I appreciate it.
Yeah.
The, the answer because of the fact that, I just wanted councilmen to be aware of because some of them don't walk by those often as I can.
Yeah.
So can I, can, can you add a sheet of note to, um, the Travis County Housing Authority, just let them know that we have an interest in trees, what their plan may be?
Sure, and just for your clarity, they can't do anything with the trees unless we approve it. So it will probably just kind of now, like they ask me some sort of plan associated either with their site plan or they submit a separate landscaping plan. So either way, we'll, we'll find out if there's opportunity for us to talk about that.
Yeah, this, 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 let them know that council does have an interest in, in the trees. I know how it'll work on my end, just let them know.
Yeah, and I think, um, just because of the size of the building and how small the lot is, when we get the twenty lots, like all those trees will probably be moved or something will happen to them. I think there's, under our new code, um, it's trees over twenty-five inches, they're like heritage trees that have like a lot higher protection on them. Um, and then maybe only like one tree that meets that requirement, but, uh, for the most part, they're just protected trees, which as Thomas mentioned, they have mitigation, like a higher caliber mitigation that they would have to or pay the fees or, but our code does also include, um, credits where if they wanted to relocate those trees to a city park.
Okay, because I was looking at the old building that's there, phase one, it would probably wipe out almost all the trees.
It's the same size, yeah.
So, uh, that's, that was just a concern because of, uh, right now, the people that are living there actually have a picket table in among those trees that would be taken away. So it's just something that, uh, I would like to have been brought up to find out what we're going to do with it. And I understand from prior council meetings that yes, we do have plans, we do have fees, we have ways of getting those things back into the Maynor one way or another.
No problem. For the sake of time, this, this should rest in our, if you feel mine. And, and that'll let us know what, what the plan will be. Uh, any additional comments?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, with those structures coming in, how is that, and Cap Metro being right there? And the thoughts about the future transportation and the green line, is that going to have any effect on that?
Um, yeah, part of the reason that SAP supports this is for the, uh, increased density around, uh, Central Future Rail Station. Um, and Cap Metro does have a TOD plan and we haven't adopted it locally yet. But that's actually part of our composite plan, it's not a we improvement. The plan, we work with, with Cap Metro into our codes and so what Cap Metro has is, yeah, the density around station is kind of coincide with that.
And the Travis County Housing Authority has taken that into consideration as far as the walkage and so forth and with the assumption that with the additional housing there, that the elderly population and potentially the more boutique type of businesses and so forth, that that's going to be right within that kind of walking distance, travel commute type of distance for them.
That answers my question. Thank you.
All right, um, are there any further questions? If not, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor, that we close the public hearing. Um, the request rezoning of lots eleven through twenty, block ten, town of Maynor and being zero point six-six acres more or less, being located along the two hundred block West Burton Street, Maynor, Texas, from light commercial C one to multifamily twenty-five MF dash two.
Has there been properly motioned by a second?
Second.
And seconded by Councilwoman, where, any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes, moving on to the consent agenda. All the following items from the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory. While the council will be enacted with one motion, there will be no separate discussion on these items unless requested by myself or a council member. In which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Uh, do I have a, but?
So, over the last couple of meetings, what we've learned is that council might like more recent reports from a couple of the department.
Council asked.
Yes, and so, uh, so Debbie's prepared to give you an up-to-date report on things that she's working on. Uh, we don't have to pull this off the consent agenda, we can have her, uh, talk and we, we just, I'm a consent agenda. And she's done if you have questions, of course, she can answer.
Okay, I was actually just going to say, I appreciate, uh, the, your report. Um, you know, I know, I guess you're going to say something, I just, that's all I was going to say was I appreciate, uh, you, you putting it out there. Um, because we know that you know a lot of stuff and we want to make sure that it's reflected, um, uh, in, in, in our reports and our record for that, so I would definitely appreciate all of your work, definitely appreciate how you've, uh, transformed this, uh, the leadership of Maynor, uh, solid it, transformed it, I appreciate all the work coming from it, so, um, that's, that's what I was going to, I was going to actually make a motion and then do questions. Oh, I know, I got a point of war. No, go ahead. Uh, do I have a motion for the consideration discussion of possible action to approve the City Council minutes of November four, twenty twenty regular meeting? Any consideration discussion of possible action on the sentence of the October twenty twenty departmental reports?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda, um, with the presentation from Debbie.
It has been properly motioned by a second?
Second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Hill. Any questions to the motion? Questions, go ahead.
I just wanted to say about the, um, the playground, uh, playground, play escape in Hamilton Point, it looks really good. And so good, it's had to be taped off right now, so, but it looks really good. And then also, uh, always helping with the, um, I don't know what it's called, unclogging, fixing the fountain in Flavale Farms. Um, and that's really good. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Uh, before I go to the, um, the vote, I, I want to say to the team, great job on providing that clarity of information that we can be able to advocate and defend what y'all are doing on a day-to-day basis to those that may be, uh, frustrated for whatever reasons, uh, that may not be fully informed on what's going on. I mean, the Public Burks, uh, department report is, is exactly what we need to be able to say what the status is on certain things and why and when it may get completed. Same thing with, with your stuff Debbie, to be able to advocate that the city does care about what's going on with our businesses and, and entities within the community. Um, so as Councilman Harvey said, you know, our ask is for that information. So when we're out there and people are shooting us messages and so forth, we would turn right back around and say, ah, don't pull up that packet, take a look at page, uh, thirty-four, I mean thirty-six. Um, so with that being said, uh, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand.
Yep, none. His motion had asked for a brief.
Oh, you want, you want the presentation?
First one. Oh, we need to be before he.
Oh, okay, I'm slow on my roll, go ahead. Okay, okay, I, I was going to do afterwards, but no problem.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, Council, and thank you for the comments. I tried really hard to get more information in there so that you would have the information, uh, for the public. I think the, you heard the leadership leader class, I'm extremely excited about this class, they've only been together since August. Um, I did have a facilitator come in, in August for the orientation and I have to say, I've done this in five other cities, I've never seen a class come together so quickly. And, uh, we do meet every Thursday night via Zoom to discuss, I'm on the call just as to, uh, just to help. This is all, everything has been done by the class, so I'm really excited for leadership made and what they're doing. I think the only other thing I would like to, um, really report on is the shop small shop local program. In the report, I did tell you that, um, I talked to about, um, about the businesses. Again, I've done this in two other cities. I've never started a shop small shop local campaign where we had eighteen businesses sign up and that was amazing to me. And so running around and making sure everybody has tickets has been a lot of fun, but I will tell you, as of yesterday, I believe it was, um, I only, I only ordered four thousand tickets because I didn't know, you know, how many businesses were going to participate. Well, I didn't have, I don't have any more tickets. And so that's fabulous and so I had to enlist some help from a team member to my right. And, uh, she had some knowledge on how to create some more tickets like ASAP. So we, she created, we created a thousand tickets, thousand more tickets today because it's only November the eighteenth and it's November the thirteenth and I know that it's just been really, really good. What's really exciting about this campaign is they're not all just, um, you know, places to eat. I mean, having Dewitt's tires, Lill's tires, I mean, you know, and they've requested more tickets. And we have a lot of downtown businesses, Tamale Addiction, Romo's, you know, Libation Station, she just got some more tickets. Um, food trucks, I'm really excited about the food trucks and so, and some home business, home-based businesses. So I just really, uh, really ask the community to support the small businesses during this campaign, but also after the campaign. Because in listening to and talking with the small businesses, you know, they are, they're hurrying and they need our support and our help especially in our community. We do, I don't know if you know, we have two businesses in Maynor. Dr. Harvey, I know that you wrote a letter of recommendation for one of them through the Thrive Texas Grant. And two of our small businesses, Libation Station and Maxium's Gumbo House, both received the max amount for the grants with Thrive Texas. Now I know, uh, Libation Station has also applied for the, um, Maestra's American, uh, grant that's going out. The first round she didn't make, but she's applied for the second round. So that's with the Maestra's America program. So other than that, if you don't have any other questions, it's, we're working on Maynor Calusa, had another meeting today. It's going to be fabulous, it's going to be May seventh and eighth of next year. And so I'm making sure in my report that I give you dates as well. And then that way, when people ask questions, you know when the events or whatever is going to happen. So we're doing really well with Maynor Calusa and we're really excited. So that's basically what I'd just like to share.
Appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Any, uh, questions, remarks for, for Debbie?
But, um, every customer that spends twenty dollars gets a ticket, right?
Yes, sir. More, you spend more tickets, you get to enter.
So when we do that math, right?
Yes, sir.
Of, you know, five or four thousand tickets is twenty, uh, twenty dollars.
That's a lot of money.
That is a part of you, sir, but that is why this program works, because you can show the ROI on a program, on a campaign like this.
So, so can you, I don't, can, is there, do you have a flyer that you can send us? Um, that we, so we can, or resend us if it's already came to our email? So that we can, um, redistribute that and kind of keep it going and, and, um, because I know I'm going to take the facts here and just kind of shoot it out and say, hey, this is what's going on through this, don't, you know, join in and blah, blah, blah. Win a thousand dollars, buy some, buy, buy some food, win a thousand dollars, you know, that kind of thing to, to get people going.
I do, I do, I actually have, I was printing the paper and then I wrote this thing where it says, city implements shop small shop local campaign. An outline program for everybody and then it tells you how long it runs and then it also lists all the businesses, the participating businesses who also have a sign on their front door that's saying that they are, uh, Maynor shop small shop. I can send this to you.
Yeah, I just, I was wanting to, um, that way we can just shoot it straight out from the email and drop it into Facebook and all that kind of stuff.
It's on our social media page.
It's already on it?
On our social media page, yes, so you have to like our page and you can share it.
Okay, well, can somebody send me the link or, I don't know.
Oh, so is it?
I don't, my wife does it really well. I do a post every now and then.
Well, I can shoot you this as well and then the Facebook, social media, yes.
And you might need to be making some more tickets. I asked her what she was doing, she was making tickets, um.
He thought I was making, uh, making stuff to pan.
I, I know these two do a lot of posting, so I'm pretty sure if you send them the social media stuff, you might be able to do more tickets, so.
Okay, all right, any other questions?
No. Go ahead, Sonny, you have a question?
I just wanted to tell you, thank you for your diligence about the tickets. Cause I was actually in the two ninety cafe when you came in and dropped off their tickets.
Oh.
And I bought the extra piece of pie so I could get my twenty dollars.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
All right, all those in favor of, uh, uh, approving the motion, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes, moving on to the regular agenda, first reading, what? Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, I spoke too fast. Uh, now we're going to executive session, the City Council will now convene the executive session pursuant to the provisions of chapter five five one, Texas Government Code. In accordance with the authority contained in section five five one point zero seven one, consultation with attorney in section five five one point zero eight seven deliberations regarding economic development negotiations, Road Hill Public, uh, Improvement District in section five five one point zero seven two, Texas Government Code deliberations regarding acquisition of real property due to us. Rhode Hill Public Improvement District in section five five one point zero seven two, Texas government code deliberations regarding acquisition of real property due to us.
on items discussed during closed executive session. Is there any items that need to be noted? Moving on to regular agenda, item number six, first reading, consideration, discussion, and possible action on ordinance rezoning lot one, block A, Cottonwood Estates in being 1.38 acres more or less and being located at 15501 US Highway 290 East, Elgin, Texas from agricultural A to medium commercial C2.
And Mayor, council members, this is the gas station that we've had the public here, not all that long now.
Do you have a motion to close the first reading?
Yeah, to approve.
To approve the first reading?
I make a motion to approve the first reading.
It's been so motioned, do I have a second? And probably second, any questions to the motion? Go ahead.
Sorry, because they want to have a permanent mobile food truck vendor there, does that mean that they need all the guidelines that we've gone through now because it's not there?
Well, there really isn't, I mean, it seems like it's a permanent food vendor. There, it would allow them to have a food vendor there as long as the food vendor in mind, but I think there's renewals on those restrictions. Number of things that have to happen before it gets stated. But it just would allow them to operate out there.
And so that's different from the laws that we had in town that we did a waiver for, right? To stay around, no different, okay.
All right, any additional questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, all those who can raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Moving on to agenda number seven, first reading, consideration, discussion, and possible action on ordinance rezoning lot one, block T, presidential height stays four and being 1.341 acres more or less and being located at the northeast corner of Samuel Welch Way in George Mason Avenue, Mainor, Texas from single family S F one to light commercial C one.
And Mayor, council members, during the public hearing, we talked about the option of neighborly business designation for this property. Although the development agreement indicated that they needed to apply for C one, neighborly business did not exist at the time and staff and planning commission has recommended neighborly business.
Do I have a motion to accept the first reading for agenda number seven?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance. He's on lot one, block T, presidential height space four and being 1.341 acres more or less and being located at the northeast corner of Samuel Welch Way in George Mason Avenue, Mainor, Texas from single family S F one to neighborhood business and be...
It has been properly motioned, do I have a second?
Second.
And so, submitted by Councilman Krupba. Are there any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, all those who can raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Agenda number eight, first reading, consideration, discussion, and possible action on ordinance rezoning lots eleven through twenty, block ten, town of Mainor, and being 0.66 acres more or less and being located along the 200 block West Burton Street, Mainor, Texas from light commercial C one to multifamily twenty five and F two.
Mayor, council members, this particular property is currently Zoned C one, which initially, C one did allow for multifamily development with an age restriction, but that has been removed from our permitted uses and the correct zoning in order to allow multifamily building, there would be a multifamily two. And so, staff and planning commission has recommended approval of MF two.
Do you have a motion on the floor?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the first reading for property rezoning lot eleven through twenty, block ten, town of Mainor, being 0.66 acres more or less and being located along the 200 block West Burton Street, Mainor, Texas from light commercial C to multifamily twenty five and F two.
It has been properly motioned, do I have a second? And submitted by Councilman Harvey. Any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, all those who can raise your hand. Those opposing? None opposing? Motion passes. Now, uh, agenda items nine through fourteen, do I have a motion to accept agenda items nine through fourteen? Nine is consideration, discussion, and possible action on a purchase contract with R H O F L L C for a special warranty D, slope easement and temporary construction easement. Item ten is consideration, discussion, and possible action on a purchase contract with Geraldine Timmerman for a special warranty D, slope easement and temporary construction easement. Um, eleven is consideration, discussion, and possible action on a purchase contract with John Jonesy and Rita Jonesy for a special warranty D, slope easement and temporary construction easement. Um, twelve is consideration, discussion, and possible action on a purchase contract with Kirk Jonesy and Kathy Jonesy for a special warranty D and temporary construction easement. Um, thirteen is consideration, discussion, and possible action on a purchase contract with Dr. Todd Mason Darnell and Kim Mason Darnell for a water waste, uh, for wastewater easement with temporary construction easement. And agenda, uh, agenda item fourteen, consideration, discussion, and possible action on a purchase contract with N B and M S Enterprises Incorporated for a wastewater easement with temporary construction easement. Huh?
I'm fine.
He's fine. Okay, that, do I have a motion?
All right, I'd like to make a motion to accept, to approve, um, substance approved, uh, items, red agenda items nine through fourteen.
It has been properly motioned, do I have a second? And seconded by councilwoman Wallace. Any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor raise your hand? None opposing, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item number fifteen, consideration, discussion, and possible action on award of a construction contract for the Cottonwood Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant and Improvements Project to Excel Construction Services LLC in amount of five million, one hundred nineteen thousand, eight hundred ninety seven dollars and fifty cents. Mayor council members, uh, the Maynor Heights pit includes the construction of a, a temporary wastewater, uh, treatment facility that will serve that particular area. Um, we're not looking at, uh, a financial impact because this is all included in the original development agreement and, uh, funds will be made available through that. If it was already included in, in, then? It's within the development agreement for Maynor Heights. Um, it's a pit, it's a terms, um, and so there's, it, it, it don't be, um, city funds expended directly. This has all been something that you all agreed to previously. Okay. All right, do I have a motion on the floor?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we award the construction contract to, for the Cottonwood Creek Water Waste, Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvements Project to Excel Construction Services LLC in the amount of five million, one hundred nineteen thousand, eight hundred ninety seven dollar and fifty cents.
It's been properly motioned, do I have a second? And seconded by councilwoman Weir. Uh, any questions to the motion? Go ahead.
I'll get it.
Go ahead, councilwoman.
Um, not a question, just a recommendation. Um, because, uh, one, when the public sees it, they're gonna see just this piece. And so maybe a little more history that this is connected to.
Um, so it doesn't look like a, a new expense?
So it doesn't look like we just quickly approved five million dollars without prior history and that, you know, no one can jump to the conclusion that the city is just saying, we're gonna spend five million dollars' money on something that quick. That make sense?
Yeah. It, it, it does. We'll look for a way to rule that we, you don't typically, I'm sorry, we don't typically, uh, do the recordation for the journal. Um, I don't know if we can maybe expand upon that somehow, um, but we'll look for. I, I thought. It's part of the bonding that, that is being done there. But I thought early, I'm just like early, early in twenty twenty, I think we did kind of talk about if there was something that was previously approved, it's kind of listing in there previously approved, there's something else, no significant, no change. I think it was just like a simple statement like that in there. I don't think it has to be a long explanatory, but as you said, if it was something that was already approved by council. Well, the development agreement was approved. Okay. Without the specific dollar amounts. Okay. Um, it's part of what will be bonded for the, for the project. Okay. So probably maybe. Yeah, but I mean, we'll, we'll look at that. Okay. Make it a little clearer, but it's, it's part of the bonding project. Okay. Any additional questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor raise your hand? None opposing, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item number sixteen, consideration, discussion, and possible action on award of lease contract for funding of city vehicles and equipment. You wanna do that or?
Uh, you just have to work.
It, it's just really. The contract, uh, that's an example. Oh, yeah. But these are all vehicles that were approved. We already approved.
Uh, correct. This was approved with the, um, budget that was presented and approved on September eighteen, sixteen, uh, sixteen. Um, and you have the, we requested three quotes from, one from Government Capital, second from Frost Bank, and the third was from B B V A. Um, and out of all the bids, uh, the one with the lowest interest rate is, uh, staff's recommendation, which is Government Capital Corporation.
Do I have a motion on the floor?
Just like to make a motion, um, to award this contract to Government Capital Corp. and ask by city manager to execute, execute the contract after legal review.
Do I have a second? Second. And probably seconded. Any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor raise your hand? None opposing, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item number seventeen, consideration, discussion, and possible action on ordinance adopting the amended annual budget for the city of Maynor for the fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand nineteen and ending September thirty, two thousand twenty.
Um, mayor council, um, we typically do a, um, what I refer to as a true up of where we actually stand as of September thirtieth, which is the end of our fiscal year, um, and that's the information you have for you.
All right, do I have a motion on the floor?
Was there, was there, what, was there any big thing that was offended? Was there anything?
Um, no. Uh, nothing that, that really stood out, uh, that was of real importance.
I, I, I maybe to answer your question, I take a very conservative approach to development and things of that sort, and so numbers that you see reflected here, uh, may show revenues a little higher than what we anticipated, but it's because of that conservative approach with a number of things, but specifically, uh, development.
Got it.
And the fees we collect.
Yeah, and to, um, in the detail in which, um, will, when the budget, when the committees get, uh, sorted out, um, one of the things that was in because of COVID, uh, we had actually gone after a St. David's Foundation grant that is something new and significant, um, that new council, uh, was not aware of. One of the other big significant was that we had to add, um, COVID lines for, one for supplies, and then second for our regular, uh, regular time pay as well as overtime pay for coverage of whatever the case is. Um, so those are probably the three most significant ones that would be of importance, especially seeing council coming in, uh, obviously existing councils already aware of it, uh, so that, that would probably be the most significant one for you all.
That's, thank you. That's why I noticed the over, the COVID overtimes in terms of that shit. Okay, thank you.
Do I have a motion on the floor?
I'd like to make a motion, approve ordinance, uh, number five nine three, adopt an amended annual budget for the city of Maynor for fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand nineteen, and then September third, ever two thousand twenty, uh, with questions.
Uh, it's been probably motioned, do I have a second? Second. And seconded, questions to the motion? Go ahead, councilwoman.
Uh, just to go back to, um, the con- uh, conversation earlier of can, um, well, one conversation, I guess it was conversation I had.
I was under my.
All right, so can we, uh, as we're starting to look, because when we had our budget meetings, we were talking about, you know, we're the conservative, conservative one, conservative two, and we was thinking, you know, you know, hoping that we would, you know, think we'd be okay, so as we're looking at the new funds, can we, uh, uh, maybe come back or have conversations or just start sharing the, sharing where we could be at with some of those financial goals that we've been talking about as a council regarding positions, uh, purchasing land, purchasing equipment, that kind of stuff.
Um, my professional opinion on that is, is still very early on, um, I still don't know what the next year is really going to look like, um, before we really even start to even talk about, uh, positions, departments, social programs, whatever. Um, the immediate need is a facility for city staff and for the police department, um, and that is not a cheap endeavor that we're gonna be going down that path. Um, and that is going to take several, unfortunately, years for us to get to that part. And so, uh, so for, you know, it would just depend in, uh, obviously, I have a certain order of what I would like to see done. Tom has his own and council has their own, so we just have to find that happening.
Yeah, that's all I want is, is just the, the conversation to continue so that, uh, so we can know where we at.
And, and I, I think after, uh, this year, we'll have a much better picture of, of how we may or may not have been affected.
Yes.
And moving forward, we, we don't have that yet.
Yeah, no, that's gonna be the point I was gonna ask if you did, just reiterate to, to substitute the new council members of that even though numbers look a certain way now, the impact of a COVID may have on the municipality would not pretty much start to reflect and show until potentially win in two thousand twenty one.
Well, the majority of our collections for property taxes does occur in the month of December. Um, anything received, uh, uh, on or after February first is considered delinquent, and so there's penalties and all those things. So when COVID happened to, uh, to rear its ugly head, we kind of already been at about a ninety eight percent collection. Um, as, and so that's why, uh, I really don't know what will impact to the citizens, uh, to the residents for property owners until we get closer to January. Um, from what I'm seeing right now, uh, as far as for, for the property taxes, um, we're on, we're on track to collect again the ninety eight to ninety nine percentile, which is what we've been accustomed to the last nine years I've been here. Um, and again, sales tax dollars, um, we've seen, we've seen a twenty four percent increase since COVID started. So, you know, people are out spending money, so it's not, and just to reiterate, we don't collect sales tax dollars on food. So that means people are out buying goods. So, um, so it's just something to kind of, um, whatever I come to talk with some of what my projections are and what trends I'm seeing out in our city, because that's all I care about, it's just us. Um, we are very, very fortunate to be in the position that we're currently in, not just the city, but the community as well. You know, there hasn't, there has, we haven't been as impacted as other, um, cities, you know, outside of Texas that have had huge businesses going out of business and people in droves becoming homeless, you know? And so we've been really very fortunate here in the city to have nonprofit organizations and even for-profit organizations who have come in to try and help, you know, mitigate some of the obstacles that we've come across, and really, we've had little obstacles.
Appreciate it. Any additional questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor raise your hand? None opposing, motion passes. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number eighteen, consideration, discussion, and possible action on the appointment of mayor pro temp to serve one year. Do I have nominations?
Have a nomination.
Go ahead.
I would like to nominate Dr. Chris Hardy for mayor pro temp.
Do I have any other nominations? Going once? Going twice? Do I have a motion to appoint councilman Dr. Chris Harvey as the mayor pro temp for two thousand twenty one fiscal year?
I, I think I was going for. I would be delighted to make a motion to, um, approve the nomination for, um, Dr. Chris Harvey to be the mayor pro temp beginning for a year from, say, two thousand twenty one.
I did not entertain the motion, no. And it's so motion, do I have a second? And it's seconded by councilwoman Wallace. Any questions to the motion? Somebody has to have a question to this motion, right?
I do.
Go ahead.
I'm here, you okay with that?
Yes, I'm.
Okay. Now, a lot of late, right?
All right, any questions to the motion? There being, uh, all those in favor raise your hand? None opposing, motion passes. Congratulations there. We about to put you to work. You got ready to act quick, huh? Moving on to agenda item number nineteen, consideration, discussion, and possible action on the appointment of three public improvement district committee council members and the chairperson to serve a one-year term. Do I have any nominations amongst council to serve on the public improvement district?
Mayor, I'd like to talk to your, for the public improvement district.
I hear a voice and it's like, I thought it was God. I was going to ask if anybody needed to know what that was, but I, you're all familiar with the bids and the processes, so, yeah. All right, so I got one nomination. Do, do I have two other individuals nominating?
Oh, yeah.
I got two. Do I have a third? Mayor pro temp?
No, thank you.
You have, you have a third? Were you on already? Okay, okay, okay. Did you want to continue or? No. All right, so I got two. Do I have a third?
That's, uh, the collection of the, basically, uh.
So, so the, I, I'll take the time to explain. Um, right now, we have three or four different pits within the city. It's a financing agreement that will reach, uh, for development. And once the pits are established, um, and some of the details of those pits become, uh, available or clear, um, we bring it to the pit committee, which, uh, would meet immediately before council. Um, initially, there might be maybe one a month for the next couple of months, maybe one meeting. Um, and then there may be a lull where there aren't many at all because the pits are doing what they're supposed to be doing and the bonds are being sold and, um,
The pits are doing what they're supposed to be doing and the bonds are being sold and, um. But before we can bring any of the changes to PIT, to council, we need to take it to a committee of, uh, three council members.
I'd just like to add that you do not allow.
And that's what I was gonna say, most of these committees, especially, uh, uh, you got the uniqueness of, of being, um, a first-termer on council. Uh, most of these will help with the, the crash course lessoning and understanding and being able to really thoroughly talk with the community. Uh, and you'll have more information than those that are not on the committee about what's being planned regarding, uh, some of the construction that's going on. So it is, it is, for those that are on the committees, they'll have a little bit more of the intimate knowledge to be able to speak more intelligently about some things.
Can you, can we have a, a committee meeting next?
I haven't heard anything yet.
Okay. Okay, I wasn't sure. Yes, sir.
Um, I remember we had a train on pit.
Uh, you're, you're gonna be getting that.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so one of our, one of our, um, onboarding retreats is going to talk about. Uh, pits, enters, all of those things together, what we've got out there. Uh, where we are with each of them and, um. Also, that's gonna be part of an economic development.
Yeah, because P three did the.
Yes, and, and P three is, is probably gonna handle most of ours, if not all.
Excellent, thank you.
Alright, uh, if we don't have a third, I'd like to nominate, uh, Councilwoman Wallace for pit. Do you accept, Councilwoman Wallace?
Yes, I do.
Alright, uh, out of the three, do I have a, uh, nomination for the chairperson?
Now, it's push. Okay, I wanna nominate.
Jean, do you accept?
Yes.
Alright, so do I have a motion to appoint Councilwoman Wallace Reer. And Councilman Jean Crouppa to the Public Improvement District with Councilman Crouppa serving as the chairperson. I just need someone to say I saw motion.
Oh, I, um, would like to, um.
Just say I saw motion, alright, alright, they gave me the language, alright.
I'm sorry. Yes, what did you say?
Just say I saw motion.
Oh, I, what?
Just say I saw motion.
Oh, I saw motion. Talk too fast.
Alright. So it's ten o'clock. Uh, I, I, uh, ooh, y'all got me lost there. Uh, it's been properly motioned, do I have a second? And properly seconded. All those in favor raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item number twenty, consideration discussion of possible action. On the appointment of three Budget Committee Council members and a chairperson to serve a one-year term. Do I have any nominations for the Budget Committee?
I nominate myself.
Alright, do we have two more?
This is my committee, by the way.
I know. Do I have one more nominated for the Budget Committee?
And this one needs less work, I don't think.
Going once, going twice.
Okay, so typically this committee will meet, uh, we meet for the proposed budget. And then we would, could meet for the amended budget. Um, for the proposed budget, um, we typically start, um, meeting with, uh, with the committee. In July roughly, um, and it's, we try to keep it to just two meetings. Um, just obviously not to lock up more, more of your time, so.
Alright. Okay, she told you with the two meetings, huh?
I am not high maintenance like other people.
Alright, uh, do, we have a, make a motion to appoint.
We need a chairperson.
Uh, that would be you?
Y'all said, I was going to volunteer for it. Do I have a motion on the floor?
To appoint, um, three council members, uh, Councilwoman Wallace, Councilwoman Reer, Councilwoman like Harvey. Um, to the Budget Committee and Councilwoman like Harvey as the chairperson for one-year term.
It has been properly motioned, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I give it to Councilwoman Hill. And any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor raise your hand. Motion passes. Moving on to agenda item number twenty-one, consideration discussion of possible action. On the appointment of two Emergency Management Committee Council members to serve a one-year term. Do you have a nomination?
I nominate myself, Mayor.
Alright, do I have another?
I wanna volunteer for it too.
Alright, do I have any other nominations?
I would like to nominate Emily Hill.
Alright, I got three. Any other nominations? There being none? Alright, um, Emily Hill, do you accept the, uh, nomination?
I will.
Alright, so, what I gotta, I gotta.
You have to vote for each one, see.
Okay.
Even have our motion for each one and see.
Guys.
Well, if you're always gonna do, you just see two, but I'm not.
You sure? Okay, alright. Cool.
We have another chip in this. We have plenty going.
You gonna get on this one, we gonna talk to the others.
We got some more though. Got plenty for everybody.
Alright, uh.
Make a motion to appoint, um, Councilman Crouppa and Councilwoman Emily Hill to the Emergency Management Committee to serve a one-year term.
It has been so motioned, do I have a second? And seconded by Councilwoman Deja Hill. Any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item number twenty-two, consideration discussion and possible action. On the appointment of three Park Committee Council members and a chairperson to serve a one-year term.
I'd like to make a nomination, um, for Deja Hill to serve on Parks Committee and Chair Person.
Do you accept that nomination?
No.
Which, which part of it?
I will be, um, a part of the committee.
You said you'd be the chair, oh, that's wonderful.
Alright, do I have any other nominations?
I definitely wanna be on this committee, I nominate myself.
Alright, do I have a, uh, I nominate Councilwoman Sonia Wallace. Do you accept?
I accept being on the committee.
So, uh, Councilwoman Reer, do you accept to be the chairperson?
No, I do not.
So, thank you to explain this one a little bit too.
Chairperson, Anya will do is open the meeting and work with me to work that to present agenda.
And propose potential.
Yes.
Any, any other nominations on the floor, or do, do we have our three? Go on, go ahead.
I will accept the nomination for chairperson two.
Alright, so do I have a motion on the floor?
Like to make a motion, uh, that we have, uh, appoint, um, Councilwoman Wallace, Councilwoman Reer. Um, Councilwoman Deja Hill to Park Committee. And appoint, uh, Councilwoman Deja Hill as the chairperson for a one-year term.
It has been so motioned, do I have a second?
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Crouppa. Any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion, there being none, all those in favor raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Alright, moving now to agenda item number twenty-three. Consideration, discussion, possible action on the reappearance. For the Planning and Zoning Commission members for place number one, place number three, place number five, and place number seven. Scott, you got any remarks to add since you work with them intimately?
He's gonna walk up and say no. I was gonna say enough, uh, they've all asked to be reappointed. Um, their attendance is right there, they have fine attendance, so nothing to add.
Alrighty then.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Planning and Zoning Commission is due to their place one. For the trial, place three, Ruben Arcodona, place five, and Akisha Small, place seven, to serve a two-year term.
It has been so motioned, do I have a second?
I second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Hill, Emily Hill. Any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion, questions to the motion, there being none, all those in favor raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes, this meeting is finally adjourned.